I call the order of the Wickliffe City Council meeting December 10th, 2018. Sandy please fill the roll.
Yandelillo.
Late.
Hey, Bogo.
Present.
Jaworski.
Present.
Koski, here.
Here.
Sackus.
Here.
Reports and communications from the mayor, safety director.
Thanks, Council President. Good evening, everybody. Just a couple of things. So, a lot of times, labor negotiations, the past two weeks since the last council meeting, and we'll have an update in executive session this evening. The solar, the company Blue Stem for the solar panels, and the HVAC company, we're still working with them and should have, should have some information to bring to committee, I would say by mid-January for some options to look at. It's been a large development project and working on for, for a good chunk of the year. As you know, council president will be adding some things to the committee here this evening. A phone contact system we'll have soon, very similar, I think, the same company that the school system uses for alerting folks to snow days, et cetera. It's almost like a reverse 911 that people can sign up for, and I figured I'd use that for emergency purposes, street closures, water main breaks, power outages, et cetera, just to reach more people easier. Should have a link to sign up within, I'd say about two weeks, and I'll get that out to everyone down on the website. We'll have about six more weeks for an update on the ABB property. Just heard from gentlemen at Colliers International last week, so we thought we were going to have your stuffing already, but just a few more weeks out for the receivership. We're, we're working on that as much as we can with Economic Developer and Economic Gulf of Drake, also working with folks at JAV Supply, as they're filling in their property, just trying to figure out what we can, how we can help and what we can do with, with these large properties that we have as time goes on. And that is all I have, if you'd like.
Any questions or comments for the mayor, safety director?
Thank you, Mayor. Reports and communications from the director of law. Just want to point out to council, there's two ordinances on the easement that was in committee and was taken out tonight. Just to clarify, one is a temporary easement, because that's just allowing them to perform the construction to put the utility in. And then the second ordinance, 2018-59, that's actually giving them the permanent easement to access that, that utility they're putting in there. I have nothing further.
Any questions or comments for the law director?
Communications from the council president. I have none. Amendments or additions to the agenda. Councilman Jaworski.
Item A, I would just like to add road salt.
Road salt will be, item A on new business. Item B will be Lloyd Road property.
I do have a request for executive session to update on labor negotiations.
I'll entertain a motion to add executive session as item 18 to the agenda and adjournment to item 19. Do you want to make that motion? Sound move.
Second.
You've got Councilman Jaworski, second to my council fellow, to add executive session as item 18 on the agenda and adjournment to item 19. Discussion?
Sandy please go to roll.
Yandelillo.
Yes.
Bogo.
Yes.
Jaworski.
Yes.
Koski.
Yes.
Levon.
Yes.
Sackus.
Yes.
Saloto.
Yes.
Any other items, amendments, or additions to the agenda? Seeing none, move on to administrators. Police chief, ice.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have any further on my monthly report this evening.
Any questions or comments for the police chief? Thank you, Chief Ice. Mayor Chief Powers.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. I have nothing to add to my previously submitted report. Oh, I'm sorry. I do have one thing. Tonight, we met the volunteer firefighters dependent fund, which I'm not a part of, but two members of council are. Councilman Jaworski and council president Levon met with two firefighters and a fifth party to ensure that our obligations are met for that dependent fund. And for everyone's knowledge, that's a board that we create here internally in the city. And if something would happen with one of our part-time firefighters, the board would help in assisting that part-time firefighter's family in getting state benefits. So it's a reason why we have to have the annual thing. We pay $150 a year, and with 20 part-time firefighters, on average, it's a good piece of, it's a good thing for us to have and do. Previously, we hadn't done that, and, well, it just makes a lot of sense. That, that's all I have.
Any questions or comments for the fire chief? Thank you, Chief Powers. Fire expert Dolez.
The only thing I have tonight is just to let you know, a little update. I'm working with a representative from the treasurer of state to get Wickliffe's unopened checkbook up and running, so I will keep you updated as that goes along. We're almost to the point where it can go live, so that's all I have tonight.
Any questions or comments? Councilman Jaworski.
Can you talk a little bit about, talk a little bit about the November budget statement? Give us a, give me, especially, some insights to where we're at, how we're doing.
Give me one minute. I do not have the financials in front of me, however. So, the general fund, at the end of November, the carry, if, the carryover was $3,597,000. Right now, we are ahead of schedule, I believe. We were projecting a fund deficit of originally $900,000, expenses over revenues, but right now, we're about 100, a little less than 150,000 more expenses than revenues. But, I mean, that swing could, could take, get larger in December, but I, I believe that we are doing better than projected. Is there specific questions that?
Do you, I guess my next question is, do you feel that we're going to be, in December, closing that gap, or do you think it's going to be widening?
It may be slightly widened. I don't think it'll be a, a large difference, because, I mean, the administrators, the department heads have done an excellent job of controlling their expenses, so I appreciate that greatly. I don't know what tax revenue we'll get in this month. We have, well, that's in the sewer fund. We do have a very large sewer bill this month for November's, for Euclid. It's about $240,000. So, but I, as far as revenues and expenses in the general fund, we're doing far better than we anticipated.
Ms. Dolez, I know we had some appropriations in November, so we had like $900,000 in the red last month, according to the receipts, expenses over receipts. Was it just, just, we had about, about $600,000 in appropriations?
At the beginning of the year, we projected a $900,000.
No, I, I agree. The month-to-date receipts, the month-to-date expenses, that was the, in November, wasn't there a big difference in how much we spent?
There's about, I think, it's about 140, 140,000 that we spent. Are you talking overall?
Well, just in the month of November.
In the general fund?
In the general fund, in the month of November.
Okay. Yes, and that was because of the fund's transfers to the.
Appropriations.
To the capital fund, that $515,000. That's the main reason that that looks the way it does in November.
Any other questions or comments for the fire ice director? Thank you, Ms. Dolez. Attorney for Mika is excused. Service director Dambrosia.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a couple of things to add to my written report. Leaf season is coming to a close. This is going to be our last week. We've probably been around the city about eight times. This is going to be it. We, we have six salt trucks. Three of those trucks right now have leaf, leaf machines on them. We've got to convert everything over to salt trucks. It's getting kind of late in the season, so. I've been posting it on Facebook. People know what we're doing. We're just asking if they're not out this week, start bagging them, use the Kimball container. And then I do want to say that we started our second shift. They actually start tonight, and then our third shift will start next Sunday. And that concludes my report.
Any questions or comments for the service director? Councilman Salo.
Just say one quick thing. I had a member of the city call and ask about the Warden Road situation again, so there is, the stop sign that went in is gray coming, going north, but she, is the, is the, was something removed going south?
Yes, we remove that every year because of snow removal, and I did talk to that resident. I think she's the same person that I spoke to.
Nancy, yeah.
I believe it is Nancy. And I did explain that to her. We, we left it out one year. God damn it, I don't know, cars slid into it, we hit it with a plow, so in the wintertime, we just remove it from there.
Is there anything we can do there? Because she feels that it is really dangerous.
I know, you know what, let me see if the lights are working on that. They should be, but let me check the lights, but yeah, you know what, we, those things are like 400 bucks, and we ruined one. I don't know if it was us or just the car sliding into it, but that's why we, we just remove it. But I'll, I'll check and make sure everything's functioning properly.
So you haven't seen, I mean, have we had any issues with cars going too fast and not stopping at that area going south?
I'm sure it happened, but I, I don't really get that many calls on that.
Those crosswalks get violated all the time.
Right.
I mean, unless we got somebody sitting there.
That's just a busy, that's a busy street, and so we, so she's got, you know, the stop sign going the other way, and she said, is there a reason why we don't care about going south? Which, you know, I don't really know what to say.
Yeah, I'll be glad to talk to her if you'd like.
Yeah, if you would.
Yeah, do you have her number? I'll, I'll call her and make sure it's, okay. Okay, great, great.
Any other questions or comments for the service director? Thank you, Mr. Dambrosia. Commissioner Sack.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. I have nothing to add to my monthly report.
Questions or comments for the building commissioner? Thank you, Mr. Sack. Recreation director Stott.
Thank you, Mr. Council, council president. I have nothing to add to my monthly report.
Any questions or comments for the recreation director? Thank you, Mr. Stott. On that level of four audience participation, if anyone would like to address Wickliffe City Council, please stand, state your name and address, the clerk's record. Each person will have a five-minute maximum on time. Would anyone like to address Wickliffe City Council?
I have a question. Connie Wu, 1577 Douglas Road. I wasn't, I haven't been able to make many meetings lately, but I did see in the News Herald about the Kimball situation, and I was just wondering why the residents who are paying for their garbage are going to be charged for residents who aren't paying. I have neighbors across the street, very nice neighbors, they've lived there at least four years. They've never put out a can. Is Kimball charging the city of Wickliffe for their waste removal? And I'm sure they're not paying because they're not putting anything out. I was wondering if something could be done to either negotiate an assessment on our taxes so that it's fair that everyone in the city pays, as Euclid and Lake do, they have the rubbish removal as an assessment, like our streetlights are, or Eastlake has Republic for their removal company, and any homes that don't pay for their garbage removal, the driver tickets their can, and their can isn't picked up. You know, I mean, they were talking a big increase in the News Herald for us that are paying. I just don't think it's fair. I don't think it's fair that the city should pay. You know, I mean, why should the city cough out 25,000 for people who aren't paying? But why should residents who are paying be forced to pay for other residents who aren't paying?
I didn't, I can answer that. So unfortunately, it was in the contract that the city was contractually obligated to pay those delinquent bills. That's how the contract was written initially, and the cities that don't have things like that in their contracts, they have a little bit of a higher charge for those collection costs. And we did, the law director and I did negotiate with them for some time. Our contract wasn't up until the end of 2021, I believe it was. They allowed us to amend that section to not be, the city's not responsible. Unfortunately, the only caveat was that they would add in that, there's a three-and-a-half percent increase, which equates to about $6.15 per year. It's unfortunately an increase, but that was the only increase, and we still actually have a pretty good rate compared to other cities in the area, but that, that is common for cities who, for cities who don't have that language where the company has to go after it and spend that time collecting, because there is a lot of administrative cost as well, which we learned some this year, trying to recoup those. So, yeah, we, unfortunately, we, we did negotiate, but that's the rate we, what we were able to negotiate. And even though the city was paying for that before, the residents were paying for it indirectly because that was a $25,000 cost. We had to pay Kimball instead of repaving the road or improving the parks, whatever it may be, that $25,000 can be spent better elsewhere. So hopefully that helps. Unfortunately, that was what we were able to negotiate for now until our contract is up, which I believe is two or three years out, which then we can renegotiate and look for a different company or, or change it again.
It stems from a terrible contract we signed in 2015, and the majority of this council was either voted against it or was not on council at the time of that original contract.
Well, that's what I wish they would have had in the News Herald, that this is not, this council, or this mayor, you know, this group did not initiate this problem. This is something you inherited.
Yeah.
But the way it was written, it's just very unfair to everyone concerned.
Councilman Jaworski.
The other issue that we face, and unfortunately, this is something that our state lawmakers have to deal with, there is a, I don't want to call it a loophole, but there's a mistake in the way that the law was written, where municipalities are not allowed to put the issue of garbage, if someone's delinquent on their garbage, on, on, on the tax, on the tax duplicate. Townships are, villages are, but they made a mistake at the State House, and somehow municipalities were not placed on that list. So we're, we're stuck. Until the folks in Columbus can get their act together, we can't even do that to help our residents out. And it's a shame. Senator Yucco has been down there for years, has, has done nothing to do it. State rep John Rogers has done nothing to do it.
Impeach.
It's a shame.
Just to further address that assessment issue, I can't speak because I don't know that affirmatively, but I don't, you've mentioned that Euclid, they put it on the assessment, and that's against state law, so it's hard for me to believe they can do it.
Well, I know it's in their taxes.
Yeah, I, I don't, and maybe they do, statutorily, they can't. I know the Lake, kind of, Eastlake tried to get it, assessments on their trash bill too, and that's when the Lake County Prosecutor's Office wrote an opinion stating, you know, under law, they couldn't do that. So I know for a fact in Lake County, it's not allowed somewhere. If they are doing it in Kihauga, it's contrary to state law. I don't know how they're doing that, but I, but I don't know for a fact that they're not doing that. But we, we, we've, we've tried that course a long time ago to get it on an assessment. And then, in essence, since the city was paying delinquent tax bills, you as the residents of the city were really already paying that, because you were the taxpayers. You know, when the city pays it, that's your money.
But, so then, just so I'm sure I have this correct, the way the contract was negotiated, every household in the city of Wickliffe is charged for waste removal from Kimball. Whether or not they're participating, they're being charged. So as in the case with my neighbor, they never put out a can, they, I'm sure they're never paying because they never put out a can, and they've been there, like I say, four years, and before that, the property was in foreclosure. So, you know, the city's been paying for them for how many years where nothing's been collected?
Law director, I want to ask that question.
Yeah, and then, let's say, under, there's ordinances, trash, trash collection is mandatory in the city of Wickliffe, so everyone was required, whether they use the service or not, to have it. It did come to a point that some people started getting cut off due to the unpaid amount of their bill, but under city ordinances, technically, they're required to have trash service.
There was no opt-out clause?
There was no opt-out clause for anybody.
Well, thank you for clarifying.
Would anyone else like to address Wickliffe City Council? Right, sir?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to challenge you to a one-hour survey.
Mr. Buck, can you, can you name the address, please?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Ed Kovalik, 29831 Phillips Avenue. And I'd like you to, in your own car, with a speed gun, sit to the corner to the fire station in that Mount Carmel U. You pick the day and the hour. Watch that traffic light. You'll be looking right at the fire station, and watch how many red light runs take place. It's a posted speed limit of 25 miles an hour. I'll bet you, you're not going to find too many going under 35. It's that bad. Broad daylight. This book right here, I didn't write this. If you got your driver's license at the age of 16, you were told about speed limits and traffic lights. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address Wickliffe City Council? Ms. Fowler?
My name is Detective Fowler. My address is 30380 Bridle Path Trail in Wickliffe, and I would just like to address council and ask them, as they are considering this year's budget for two, I'm sorry, the 2019 budget, to please consider adding some hours to the cuts that are being made to the city programs coordinator hours and salary. Currently, it's been cut directly in half. Yes, there's a lot of things that I currently do that will be under review to see what can be eliminated, but I also do a lot of things to coordinate volunteer time, special projects, grants, and services to the city that may suffer if those particular programs are eliminated, such as litter collections in the spring, beautification efforts in the summer. You want our city to look beautiful for our residents and for visitors. We provide different opportunities for those, our residents to recycle, and just our regular education and upgrades for just keeping current with, with litter prevention, recycling, beautification. Not to mention the things I do in the city office itself. So rather than randomly cut it directly in half, I wish that you would consider some of the duties that I do and perhaps expand that. I understand that you want to keep within a certain budget and eliminate benefits to myself and Mr. Sack, who is also being cut to part-time, and I can appreciate that, but then there's also salaries being given to other officials that is kind of like an abort, across-the-board kind of zero, zero gain, zero savings. So please do consider that when you're going through your line-by-line of your finance and budget for this year. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Anyone else like to address Wickliffe City Council? If not, I'll mark audience participation closed. Committee reports. The committee in the whole met on December 3rd, 2018, at 7:02 to discuss property tax abatement and the Green Ridge Golf Course property easement. Present, Yandello, Bogo, Jaworski, Koski, Levon, Sackus, Saloto. Also present, Barbis, Zeely, Ice, Mika, Dambrosia, Scrouzer, Dolez, Sack, Stott, Powers. The property tax abatement portion of the meeting was canceled due to a legality issue and will be discussed at another time. This item remains in committee. The Green Ridge Golf Course property easement topic was also canceled. The owners of the property requesting to purchase the currently eased property could not attend. This item will remain in committee. Meeting adjourned at 7:03, respectfully submitted. The finance committee met on December 3rd, meeting called Order at 7:04. The purpose of 2019 budget. Present, Yandello, Bogo, Jaworski, Koski, Levon, Sackus, Saloto. Also present, Barbis, Zeely, Ice, Mika, Dambrosia, Scrouzer, Dolez, Sack, Stott, Powers. Mayor Barbis presented an updated version of his projected 2019 budget. The mayor sifted through the capital requests from each department and suggested his recommendations to council. Items include two new police cars with equipment, $100,000 set aside for a fire engine, a mini excavator for the service department, and a shuttle bus in repairing the Colby Park tennis courts for the rec department. Council president Levon recommended that he also add $10,000 to the police capital for 10 body cameras. No one objected to this recommendation. The budget proposes moving the building commissioner position to part-time. Councilman Bogo and councilwoman Salo, Koski and Saloto all objected to this move. Both Councilman Bogo and Councilwoman Saloto are concerned that the building commissioner won't be able to complete all of his tasks at $29 per week. Councilwoman Koski stated that she opposed any cuts to the workforce since, since the residents just passed a levy. The remainder, the mayor reminded the committee that earlier in the year, in a public meeting, the building commissioner stated he could do his job in a part-time role. The majority of the committee had no objection with the mayor's recommendation. This budget has, also has the programs coordinator position moving to part-time. The proposed budget has a projected operating deficit of $617,566. The mayor stated that this is a worst-case scenario. He'd rather project in the red and finish in the black than vice versa. The committee recommends to council that they approve the 2019 budget. This item is reported out of committee, meeting adjourned at 8:13 PM, respectfully submitted. Any other committee reports? Commission reports? Seeing no old business, we're going to new business A, road salt. Councilman Jaworski.
Thank you. Yesterday, we had that, I guess, I don't want to necessarily say call it a storm, but that really bad flurry that left the roads extremely icy. Mr. Mayor, I just, as a safety director, I just want to implore you, if you feel that, you know, that money is an issue when it comes to salt and the safety of the city, if we need to spend extra money to properly salt the roads in that type of a situation, myself and I'm sure other members of council would be happy to, to make sure that there's enough money in, in the salt budget to do that. I just, I know, I received several calls, especially on some side streets where it wasn't salted or it refroze overnight after it was salted, and they were just, residents were just concerned because it was a sheet of black light, so. I just want to let you know that I'm committed to, you know, the safety of the city, and if it takes us to having to move some numbers around so there's enough money to salt, I'm more than willing to, you know, to sit down and make sure that we can do that.
Mayor Barbis?
Yeah, just to be clear on that, I'm concerned about safety as well. It's more of a timing issue, not just the Wickliffe, other cities as well, where the snow came down fairly quickly. Right when everyone's getting off work, second shift hadn't started yet, you know, the guys had to come in from Metternham Willowick, which were covered in ice as well, so not necessarily an issue of not having enough salt or money to take care of the roads, but timing issue, and those things happen when weather changes quickly, so. I think we'll be prepared now the second shift is on, and.
Thank you.
Councilman Sackus?
I just want to say, I, I agree in the fact that one thing Wickliffe residents and us can all say is, they all do take pride in the way our roads have been in the past and going forward, you know, compared to other cities. I know when we crossed over to Euclid a couple of years ago, you could tell the difference. You're in Wickliffe, and you could, so I just hope we keep up that tradition going forward. That's all.
New business B, Lloyd Road property. I'd like to put that into the committee of the whole. Move on to ordinances.
Ordinance number 2018-51, an ordinance amending chapter 121, council, section 121 oh one, rule seven, order of business of the codified ordinances of the city of Wickliffe, Ohio, second reading. Ordinance number 2018-52, an ordinance amending chapter 121, council, section 121 oh one, rule 13, meetings of the codified ordinances of the city of Wickliffe, Ohio, second reading. Ordinance number 2018-53, an ordinance amending chapter 121, the codified ordinances of the city of Wickliffe, Ohio, second reading. Ordinance number 2018-54, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Wickliffe, Ohio, to enter into an amended contract with Kimball Recycling and Disposal Inc. for the collection of solid waste and yard waste pursuant to chapter 961, garbage, rubbish, and refuse collection of the codified ordinances of the city of Wickliffe, Ohio, second reading. Ordinance number 2018-57, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Wickliffe, Ohio, to enter into a contract with Trax Construction Company for the Maple Street Water Main and Pavement Improvement Project and declaring an emergency.
Suspension.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Sackus, seconded by Councilwoman Koski, to span the rules of council and place ordinance 2018-57 on third and final reading. Discussion? Sandy, please call the roll.
Yandelillo.
Yes.
Bogo.
Yes.
Jaworski.
Yes.
Koski.
Yes.
Levon.
Yes.
Sackus.
Yes.
Saloto.
Yes.
Adoption. Moved by Councilman Biancillo, seconded by Councilwoman Saloto, to adopt ordinance two thousand eighteen dash fifty-seven as presented. Discussion? Sandy, please call the roll.
Biancillo?
Yes.
Bogo?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Koski?
Yes.
Levon?
Yes.
Sackus?
Yes.
Saloto?
Yes.
Ordinance number two thousand eighteen dash fifty-eight, an ordinance authorizing a temporary construction easement to Lake County Board of Commissioners and declaring an emergency.
Suspension.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Sackus, seconded by Councilman Jaworski, to suspend the rules of council and place ordinance two thousand eighteen dash fifty-eight on third and final reading. Discussion? Sandy, please call the roll.
Biancillo?
Yes.
Bogo?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Koski?
Yes.
Levon?
Yes.
Sackus?
Yes.
Saloto?
Adoption.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Biancillo, seconded by Councilwoman Bogo, to adopt ordinance two thousand eighteen dash fifty-eight as presented. Sandy, please call the roll.
Biancillo?
Yes.
Bogo?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Koski?
Yes.
Levon?
Yes.
Sackus?
Yes.
Saloto?
Yes.
Ordinance number two thousand eighteen dash fifty-nine, an ordinance authorizing an easement to Lake County Board of Commissioners and declaring an emergency.
Suspension.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Sackus, seconded by Councilwoman Saloto, to suspend the rules of council and place ordinance two thousand eighteen dash fifty-nine on third and final reading. Discussion? Sandy, please call the roll.
Biancillo?
Yes.
Bogo?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Koski?
Yes.
Levon?
Yes.
Sackus?
Yes.
Saloto?
Yes.
Adoption. Second.
Moved by Councilman Biancillo, seconded by Councilman Jaworski, to adopt ordinance two thousand eighteen dash fifty-nine as presented. Discussion? Sandy, please call the roll.
Biancillo?
Yes.
Bogo?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Koski?
Yes.
Levon?
Yes.
Sackus?
Yes.
Saloto?
Yes.
Ordinance number two thousand eighteen dash sixty, an ordinance creating a full-time position of senior activities coordinator within the Department of Recreation of the city of Wickliff, Ohio, and establishing compensation therefore and declaring an emergency.
Suspension.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Sackus, seconded by Councilman Jaworski, to suspend the rules of council and place ordinance two thousand eighteen dash sixty on third and final reading. Discussion? Councilwoman Koski.
One question I forgot to ask. So do we have to eliminate the other? If you're changing the title, then we have to eliminate the other title in the ordinance?
We're, we're just changing the name to the ordinance, and that's what it says.
Okay.
The change in the name of the position.
It's just more of a modifying than creating, sorry.
Right. It's modifying the name, it's not, it's not creating a new position.
It says create.
It does say create.
It says.
Create.
Create. Yeah, I mean, that's the way the ordinance reads, but what it really did was changing the name of the, the position.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Sandy, please call the roll.
Biancillo?
Yes.
Bogo?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Koski?
Yes.
Levon?
Yes.
Sackus?
Yes.
Saloto?
Yes.
Adoption.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Biancillo, seconded by Councilwoman Saloto, to adopt ordinance two thousand eighteen dash sixty as presented. Discussion? Councilman Jaworski.
Just real quick, I don't know if we'll have an opportunity at a later point, but just want to thank Judy Tegner for her service to the city.
Read the second. Any further discussion? Sandy, please call the roll.
Biancillo?
Yes.
Bogo?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Koski?
Yes.
Levon?
Yes.
Sackus?
Yes.
Saloto?
Ordinance number two thousand eighteen dash sixty-one, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of one new dump body and snowplow package to the Ohio Department of Administrative Services, Office of State Purchasing for use by the Service Department of the city of Wickliff, Ohio and declaring an emergency.
Suspension.
Moved by Councilwoman Koski, seconded by Councilwoman Saloto, to suspend the rules of council and place ordinance two thousand eighteen dash sixty-one on third and final reading. Discussion? Sandy, please call the roll.
Biancillo?
Yes.
Bogo?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Koski?
Yes.
Levon?
Yes.
Sackus?
Yes.
Saloto?
Yes.
Adoption.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Biancillo, seconded by Councilman Bogo, to adopt ordinance two thousand eighteen dash sixty-one as presented. Discussion? Councilman Jaworski.
Just one question, Joe, when do you guys expect delivery on this deal?
We probably will not have it until maybe April or May. It won't be in service for this.
Of two thousand nineteen or two thousand twenty?
I'm gonna say two thousand nineteen. We will not have it for this winter.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Sandy, please call the roll.
Biancillo?
Yes.
Bogo?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Koski?
Yes.
Levon?
Yes.
Sackus?
Yes.
Saloto?
Yes.
Ordinance number two thousand eighteen dash sixty-two, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Wickliff, Ohio to enter into a contract with the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number one sixteen, Sergeant Lou Tebbs, and declaring an emergency.
Suspension.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Sackus, seconded by Councilman Biancillo, Biancillo, to suspend the rules of council and place ordinance two thousand eighteen dash sixty-two on third and final reading. Sandy, please call the roll.
Biancillo?
Yes.
Bogo?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Koski?
Yes.
Levon?
Yes.
Sackus?
Yes.
Saloto?
Yes.
Adoption. Second.
Moved by Councilman Biancillo, seconded by Councilman Bogo, to adopt ordinance two thousand eighteen dash sixty-two as presented. Sandy, please call the roll.
Biancillo?
Yes.
Bogo?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Koski?
Yes.
Levon?
Yes.
Sackus?
Yes.
Saloto?
Yes.
Ordinance number two thousand eighteen dash sixty-three, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Wickliff, Ohio to enter into a contract with the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number one sixteen, patrolmen, and declaring an emergency.
Suspension.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Bogo, seconded by Councilman Jaworski, to suspend the rules of council and place ordinance two thousand eighteen dash sixty-three on third and final reading. Discussion? Sandy, please call the roll.
Biancillo?
Yes.
Bogo?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Koski?
Yes.
Levon?
Yes.
Sackus?
Yes.
Saloto?